Just lost track of them. All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. And we'll call in, starting with Lori.
Lori Garcia here.
Mary.
Mary Goldstein here.
Megan.
Megan Harvey here.
And Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
And Meryl Lashapelle?
Meryl Lashapelle here.
And Cindy Kuzensky here. So, welcome to the February 8th School Committee Meeting. And we'll begin with announcements. And under that is correspondence and gifts. So I'm going to turn it over to Megan.
I have no correspondence to report this week, and I also have no gifts to report.
That was nice and easy. All right, so at this time, it is time for public comment. So we're going to open that up, and we are going to ask that you limit to three minutes. State who you are, and we will begin right away. We have Ann raised, Ann Tally. Okay, and Jean, I see you afterwards. Here's Anne.
Hi, I'm Ann Tally. I'm coming on the meeting tonight because I'd like to just welcome people to the Parent Advisory Committee as part of the Healthy Youth Coalition. My job is the Outreach Coordinator for that. And we have meetings once a month. They meet on the second Wednesday of the month, which would be tomorrow, from just five to six. Right now, it's online through Google Meet, but hopefully we'll be moving to in-person. And I just thought I would come on, because last time I came to the school committee, there was a little discussion about safe technology and concerns about cellphone use and excessive social media. And I've had a lot of parents in my committee who are concerned about that. It's the primary thing we've been speaking about the past few months. My parent group is basically driven by what the parents come, what they want to talk about. We're here to be responsive to them. And so I know this is a hot topic on many people's minds right now. So I thought maybe people would be interested to know that this, we're going to be arranging several guest speakers in the next few months, coming to speak to both middle school and high school families surrounding safe technology and also online safety. And so just wanted to also say that the next meeting, my colleague Rebecca Edwards will be coming on as part of the agenda to talk about the PNAS data, which is about teen substance use and other behaviors wellness issues for teens. She wanted me to pass that along, so thank you. And I hope, oh, one more thing. If anyone is interested in coming to my parent meeting, the best way to reach me would probably be through my website, or our website, which is easthamptoncoalition.org. And there's a Contact Us button on there, and that goes right to our email. And I can send anyone the link to this meeting tomorrow, or any future meetings. Or you could be added to our mailing list, just so you can keep in the loop with what we're up to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jean? Hi, go ahead.
Okay, thank you for trying to keep the public safe and working towards that goal, a goal which we both share. Every week, I know that Megan Harvey, epidemiologist for the East Hampton School Committee and Board of Health, presents info on the dashboard regarding the COVID picture. And several times, she mentions both that the cases are increasing, the positive cases are increasing, and also mentions that this is a pandemic of the unvaxxed, leading to the conclusion that the vaccination rates needs to increase. What she doesn't mention is whether the number of cases are coming from the vaxxed or the unvaxxed. If one is trying to understand what is happening, then one should inquire about the fuller picture, the context of these numbers. If the positive cases coming primarily, if the positive cases are coming primarily from the unvaxxed, then certainly, this may be a pandemic of the unvaxxed. If the positive cases are coming primarily from the vaxxed, then this is not a pandemic of the unvaxxed, and is in fact, a pandemic of the vaxxed. According to an article dated 1/21/2022 in Mass Live, "Breakthrough COVID Cases in Massachusetts Now Equal More Than Half of the Total Number of New Cases." What does this mean? In the weekly report through 1/15, there were a total of 132,557 new cases. By itself, that sounds scary. And one can think, oh, no, this means that one needs to get vaccinated. But let's get a little more curious about this data. How much of these new cases are coming from the vaxxed? Or how many of these are coming from the unvaxxed? So it goes on in the article. Of these cases, 65% represent breakthrough cases, which means what? That cases come through in individuals that experienced vaccine failure. In other words, out of the 132,557 cases, over half, 65%, happened in people who already had the vaccine. Yes, the vaccine that was touted to prevent the transmission of COVID has failed. And now, the people who got vaccinated are still getting COVID. If more than half of the new cases are from people who got vaccinated, would you call this a pandemic of the vaccinated? Or a pandemic of the unvaccinated? Yes. According to this data, it would be a pandemic of the vaccinated. This is also corroborated by the data from the cruise lines. Recently, where fully vaxxed crew and passengers left on a trip for Spain, I believe. And later while on the trip, there were so many positive cases that were found. Guess what? There were no unvaxxed people around. So where is this coming from?
Jean, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, because you're over three minutes. Sorry.
Are these coming, are these cases coming from the vaxxed or the unvaxxed? These are coming from the vaxxed. I say this not to blame or look down upon the, upon the vaxxed. I say this to only clarify the error in concluding that has been drawn concerning how the increasing number of cases have been used to possibly promote fear, to promote the goal of vaccination, increasing vaccination rates. If this were about public health, we would want to correctly interpret the data in a way that is meaningful for the public. So I urge you to consider that, that we want to, okay.
Thank you. Okay, Scott?
Okay, go ahead. I'm assuming you meant me?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to keep this kind of short. I just did a little research before this meeting here, and I found, I wanted to look about mask mandates and schools throughout the United States of America here. And I found that out of all 50 states, 35 out of the 50 states have no mask mandates in schools. And also, there was an article today that I found that said that there's also four more states that are going to be lifting their mask mandates for schools in the upcoming weeks, through, I think, mid-March or maybe the end of March. But I think, if I, my brain isn't failing me, I think that the Desi's mask mandate for schools is coming up February 28th, I think. There's a lot of information out there, and my brain's getting a little convoluted. But my hope is, is that Desi will release that, and that the East Hampton Schools will think about releasing the mask mandates for the kids in the schools. Did a little, the last email I got about the cases, and of course, this also goes towards the vaccination rate as well, that the high school vaccination rate is hovering around 90%. It's hard, because they don't actually break it down by age and not by school. And there was last, the last data I got from the Superintendent of Schools, from Dr. Leclerc, was a little graph, and it said that there was five positive cases, and out of the five positive cases, five of them were vaccinated. So it was 100% of the positive cases of the high school students were all vaccinated. And the middle school is a little harder to, because the age categories, but the, I couldn't really get the vaccination rate, but it's probably somewhere about, I'm guessing, 79 to maybe 77% are vaccinated. It's higher the older the kids get. But it was eight positive cases, and six of them were vaccinated. So requiring these kids and pushing the vaccination on the kids probably isn't, you know, 100% necessary. And I mean, there's plenty of data out there that says that kids aren't at a great risk for bad disease when they get COVID. Of course, you know, there's also duly noted that the Omicron isn't a very severe case of COVID as well. So I, I just, I'm a little taken aback all the time when there's this big push, and especially as they're starting to want to push it on younger and younger kids, with not a lot of data, and not a lot of studies on long-term effects on this kind of vaccine on kids. We have no idea what's going to happen in five, 10, 15 years with this whole treatment. So just hoping that the schools will take a good, hard look at the vaccination rates and the positive cases. And I'm seriously hoping that the schools will take a hard look at the mental anguish that these kids have to go through with the mask, especially with all the data that's out there saying that cloth masks are not nearly as effective as one thought at one time. And obviously, N95 masks have to be professionally fitted or properly fitted for the kids. And we all know how well kids like to have a mask on their face all day long. So my hope is, is that the school and Desi will rescind that mask mandate coming, moving forward, sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley?
Hello, I just wanted to speak today. Megan Harvey, during the Board of Health, mentioned that this is a pandemic of the unvaccinated. But when she says that, she doesn't take in consideration the natural immunity. Natural immunity is superior. When the child already has COVIDed, they already have natural immunity. This is the way humans have survived since the beginning of mankind. Natural immunity is superior. John Hopkins doc says that natural immunity is 20 times more effective than the vaccine for COVID. The January 19 report from the CDC showed natural immunity against COVID was at least three times as effective as vaccination alone at preventing people from becoming infected. Overall, the study showed natural immunity outperformed the vaccine immunity when it came to preventing infection and hospitalization. On February 7th, a CDC report revealed that surviving COVID provides excellent natural immunity and staves off repeat infection, hospitalization, and death for the deadliest. Natural immunity is more effective than the vaccine immunity. They're now being called upon to update their policies and allowing proof of previous COVID infection to be used as proof of having full immunity. In other words, your stated desire to increase vaccination rates needs to be changed. Allowing that proof of having COVID is, if they already have natural immunity, you don't need to wear a mask. My son has asthma and breathing problems since he was a baby. If we already have natural immunity, why does he need to? Or any child or parent need to wear a mask if they have natural immunity? The children have suffered enough. We need to make this mask mandate policy a mask optional policy. By keeping it a mask mandate, you're infringing upon parental rights to decide what to do with my child's body. By keeping it a mask optional, you allow each parent to decide. Emergency youth authorization still needs informed consent. This cannot be required and needs to stop. You're in violation of the Nuremberg Code. All COVID vaccines, COVID PCR tests, antigen tests, and masks are merely EUA authorized, not approved. Long-term safety has not been determined. Since these are all EUA products, this means it's experimental. And this means people have the right to refuse them, under the Nuremberg Code. No one can be coerced to participate in this experiment. Consent of individuals and parents is essential, which means that people have to have a choice to decide what they will choose. Any organization like-
Megan? Megan? I'm not Megan, sorry, Shelley.
Almost done.
You go first, so I'm going to ask that you just finish up?
Yep, I'm right there. Any organization like the school committee that requires EUA COVID vax, tests, or masks, or are in violation of federal law and will likely face lawsuits if you don't allow exemptions and alternatives. Reminder that testing is also EUA and is in violation of the Nuremberg Code. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Leah?
Hi there, I'm speaking because I would like to amend a couple of questions I brought to the superintendent and district earlier this year related to tech wellness. My first question is, now that a grassroots wait-until-eighth smartphone program exists in our town, can our school system post a simple link to it on a district resources webpage or flyer to let incoming parents know of its existence on an annual basis? I imagine this link being one piece of a larger resources page, much like the one already used by Milton Public Schools or the Martin Luther King Middle School. I have attached links to these pages in a follow-up email. I'm reframing this question because I do not feel like it is a big ask. While the program indeed is not for everyone, as I've always stated, it also is not a novel idea. Many schools already work with this optional program in some capacity. As a former teacher, I saw that inequity problems are inherent in schools when some kids are pulling out $1,300 smartphones and others can't afford a basic plan. When some kids respect off-in-away policies and others don't. Never mind the disrupting messages that get sent from kid to kid during school hours and instruction time. Wait-Until-Eighth simply helps normalize opting out for a group of students who may already feel incredibly left out in situations that are already coming down hardest on our kids. All of this begs several follow-up, longer-term questions. What is the effectiveness of our current off-in-away policies at all levels? And when are one-to-one devices being used in relationship to A, age-appropriate curriculum? B, our digital curriculum? And C, the American Academy of Pediatrics' current screen time recommendations, especially following remote learning and the pandemic? I was glad to hear that there will be an upcoming curriculum presentation soon, because when I go online and search my kids' curricular links, I find a lot of inactive sites and little evidence that any of these questions are being addressed. It seems outdated. This information should be available to parents, including clear communication about the school's off-in-away policies, because parents and teachers have to work together for any of this to be truly effective. Luckily, there are more tech options for families today than there were just five years ago. And we also have the Healthy Youth Initiative starting some really amazing things. We have options out there that aren't as disruptive, but still allow children to carry basic communications tools. Still, it requires a lot of vision to address complicated tech problems in a community, and there's no one-size-fits-all approach. In conclusion, there is enough work to do on the tech wellness front in our system to warrant numerous interventions and more staff than our district currently has in relative, in relevant departments. This is just one established tool I've personally seen work that can help struggling families support each other. Please read the full FAQ before dismissing my above questions. Last, I do plan to attend the Healthy Youth Coalition meeting, because I want to bring and share a list of questions that I've compiled so far that have been sent to me from over 40 parents who have joined Wait-Till-Eighth. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't know if I'm pronouncing it right, but me?
Hi, yeah, that's fine. How are you tonight?
Good.
Thank you for pronouncing. Thank you so much. I just wanted to get on real quick. I don't have much time, but I just wanted to get on and just stand up for the children and just let you guys know. To acknowledge that this past Friday, the 14th, the CDC issued updated guidance stating that cloth masks provide little to no protection. And I'm wondering why school committees and Bessie and all our districts still insist on taking a scientific position that is contrary to this, especially when the damage to our children's psychosocial health and language development skills is growing painfully obvious. Facial expression are integral to human connection, and particularly for younger children who are only learning now how to signal their fear, confusion, or happiness. I have seen other schools that have removed mask mandates, and then the energy in the rooms and in the hallways is electric. Kids are happy and positive, and I think this needs to be taken into account, so please, please, think about this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? If you want to say anything, please signal now. I'm going to scroll through. Okay, I see, is it Shan?
Hi, this is Shannon. Hi, thank you for calling on me. And I just wanted to chime in as well. I'm also very concerned that it's been two years of children in masks. It's unconscionable to me. It's been entirely too long to me. It's an experiment, and you don't do these things to children. It's psychologically abusive and, you know, socially, you know, damaging, and we don't know the long-term consequences. And I hope this is going to be ended immediately. I just, it's blowing my mind that we've allowed this to continue. And I just wanted a moment to speak, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, going once, going twice, please signal.
I see one more. I see WWJD has raised their hand.
Okay.
Hi, that's WWJD. I just want to say that I'm not sure who saw this, but there was a Senate roundtable hearing, not a hearing, it was a discussion. And it was four hours long, and it was full of frontline doctors who were there in the beginning of COVID. And lawmakers, not lawmakers, lawyers, and scientists. And all of them fervently said for four hours that this is not a pandemic. This is a PCR test pandemic. If you guys would just, no, mainstream media did not air this. This was Ron Johnson, our Senator in the United States Senate. Mainstream media didn't air it, because this is a political thing. And as I understand it, East Hampton is leaning politically when they do things like this. That's wrong. We're all watching. And if you want to watch the Senate hearing and hear all the truth that I heard, and that everybody else that watched it, you have to tune into Rumble or OAN, because 40, 22, all these local channels, NBC, ABC, CBS, they're not putting it on TV for people to see. This is a scam. There's something going wrong here, and I agree with everything everyone has said so far, especially the breaking of the Nuremberg, the Nuremberg Code. As I understand it, there, I'm not sure about teachers, but Board of Health members have, what is it? It is bonds without surety or with surety. And that is, they're going to be in big trouble for continuing to mandate when there's no scientific reason for it. They're having their own informant, come on and give us their data. We're not asking for it. We're being steamrolled by our town hall right now. So can you just take into consideration that we're all well aware and getting pretty tired of it, and I want the masks off of our kids? Thank you.
Okay, and I want to remind everybody who is going to talk to, please state their name and their address. So is there anybody else before we continue and close public?
I see someone identified as iPhone who's raised their hand.
Okay, I don't see that, but iPhone, please state who you are and your address, and go ahead. Go ahead.
I think he's having trouble. I think he's trying.
We can't hear you.
No, no, we can't hear you, sir.
You are on mute, so you're going to have to unmute yourself, please?
There you go. How you doing? Sorry about that. Hey, my name's Rob. I'm a, I'm a delivery driver. I'm on the roads, that's really my address. I go up and down I-90 all the time. And so I have the luxury of being to every city and town in the state of Massachusetts. Hey, folks, listen, I wish you the best, but let's get with the science. The science is not the same from two years ago. Masks don't work on kids. I had COVID, I was in the hospital for one day, they gave me a shot, one shot of steroid, and that was it. Game over. It was like a common call to me. I wish you would unmask these kids. It's detrimental to these kids breathing. I have two children, and it's tough on them. They hate the mask, okay? They hate it. They want to communicate and be normal citizens. Unless you can put the science, the real science out there, and put it on the table, and let the adults make a decision, okay? That'd be much better. No one wants to get sick. No one wants to get sick, but you know what the stats are, who's getting sick? And it isn't children in elementary or middle schools. That's all I got to say, because I'm driving right now, and that's why there's lights on, and we'll see you later. I got to go. Have a wonderful day, Merry Christmas, and stop lying about the vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair? Could you please make sure that people are East Hampton residents and state their full name?
Yes. Thank you. All right, I think that's it. I don't see anybody.
WWJD has raised their hand again, but they've already spoken.
Yep, yep, there's only one time. All right, I think we're done. And I'm going to scroll through one last time, and then we're going to close public speak. All right. Okay, Megan, you don't-
I do see somebody else. We see Catherine?
Catherine.
Hi, I just wanted to say to the parents on this call, that it's up to you to take responsibility for your own children's health, so please stop consenting to testing and stop letting these people abuse your children by putting masks on them. And to the school committee, masking children and testing children is abuse and a violation of their rights. Please keep that in mind, because you will be held accountable.
Can you state your last name and where you live?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Megan, do you see anybody? I do not.
I do not see anybody.
Okay, all right. Okay, we're going to close public comments. Thank you. And we are going to open it up to presentations. Dr. Leclerc?
Good evening. So I just wanted to start with the We the People team. Kayla Scanlon may be talking about this in her presentation, so I don't want to, I don't want to take away from her. But we are very fortunate to have an exceptional program at East Hampton High School, led by Kelly Brown. And the students recently competed at the state level, and they won for the fifth year in a row, which is, take a moment, it's amazing to win this one time at the state level, but to win it five years in a row, competing against schools from across the state, public, private, is really an amazing feat. Now, the next phase is, the We the People team heads to Washington DC to represent the state of Massachusetts at the national competition. I don't know if Kelly is on the call tonight, but there were just a few things, and I don't really know that it requires a vote, but there were two things that we wanted to bring to you tonight. And the first one is that they have set up a GoFundMe page, which I think normally you would vote on, however you voted on a GoFundMe page for We the People in previous years, so I know that you're in support of this. This would, this helps with the travel expenses for the team as they head to Washington, the transportation, the hotel rooms, the meals, that sort of thing. In previous years, the students have had, and the teachers have had GoFundMe pages, but they've also done pasta suppers, they've done auctions and raffles. Some of that, you know, they're really taking a little bit of a step back on, but they're, but they really have gotten the GoFundMe page up and running, so I wanted to let you know that. I did grant permission to them based on the fact that you have supported that in previous years, and Pat Bruff has worked with them in previous years to set that up. And the second piece is, this is an out-of-state field trip, so we do need your approval for them to attend Washington DC in April, representing the state of Massachusetts. It's a small group. They are taking all the COVID precautions, and I won't, I won't get into everything, but there- And I won't, I won't get into everything, but they're, they're really practicing safe behavior. They're extremely dedicated to going on this trip. The firm or the company that's organizing this trip has done all the things that they need to do as far as mitigation strategies, um, in Washington while the students are there. And I'm sure Kelly can provide specifics if you need that. But, um, they did not have the opportunity to attend Washington DC last year because it was a virtual competition. It was 100% virtual. So, um, this year the students are really hoping to get back to the in-person competition, which they have won before at the national level, I should point out. Because we need to give these kids all the praise. It's a different group of students every year, which also makes it equally amazing. But I'm open to questions. I don't know if Kelly is in the group tonight. If Kelly wants to jump in, I don't mean to take her thunder away, but, um, I will try to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Okay, I don't, I don't see Kelly. And are there any questions that people have or comments? Before we take a motion. Okay, Megan?
I don't have a, a question so much as I just wanted to say how amazing it is. It's so neat to be in a community where we have this kind of talent and not just in this area, but all sorts of talented, um, kids. That's just really, really cool. And forgive my, um, newness on this, but is there any, are there any funds? Not that the school committee has access to, but I don't know, PTO, any other? What else can we do to help these kids get to their, to DC?
Well, I think, um, I, I will, and there may be people on this call that are more expert than I am. But in the past, um, there has been so much community support. Families, community members, citizens in the community, but also businesses in the community have stepped up to support these students. Um, and I can't even mention, I can't even express the amount of people that give volunteer hours to help support the students. Um, attorneys, past graduates, um, there's all kinds of mentor coaches that are out there. Uh, the mayor has gone up there. Jean Libby, who's our parent engagement coordinator, has gone up there and acted as, as a judge. I've been there as a judge. There are many retired people in the community that act as judges. So there's, there's just so, um, there's so much contributed to these students, to their success. So, um, they, they have been successful in raising funds in the past, everything that they've needed and, and then some, uh, in the, they've been able to get like, you know, shirts and things like that.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve the trip?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, now, uh, I think we had two at once. We had the mayor and Lori. I think Lori made the motion and the mayor seconded. All right. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Megan?
Megan Harvey, yes.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle asked, yes.
Baron?
Baron, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, 100% yes.
Lori?
Sorry, Garcia, yes.
And Cindy Kuzinski, absolutely. Um, so I did some checking, um, while, um, we were listening. And I just want to make an announcement to people about public speak. So we're going to ask two things. Um, one, you not have signs, um, in order for us to call on you. We really need to see your face. So turn on your camera when you speak and state your name and your
That's not what free speech is. That's ridiculous.
So, um, that is the policy for, um, how public speak should happen, especially over Zoom. And we try to be pretty lenient, but you just have to turn your camera on and state who you are. So we're going to, um, require that, um, from now on. And other than that,
I'm sorry, you're just going to make a decision. We'd like to require that the chat section be turned on then?
So, um, we are going to ask, public comment has gone and it's, it's done. So we are moving on. I just want the public to know for future meetings that we're going to ask that people, um, do what we need them to do. So that's all for today.
Why don't you return to in-person public meetings then?
And
Zoom is not inappropriate.
Where? Show up at the town hall with
And are we ready to go on? So now we have Safe Passage.
Return to in-person meetings. Turn on the chat section.
Can we cancel, can we eject these people out of the meetings if they're speaking out of turn, please?
Yes. This is ridiculous. So public speak ended. Um, the announcement I make is for future meetings. So we're going to ask, we're going to have you have
How do you make it on the chat section?
Megan, do you want to take care of that?
And Madam Chair, signs are not allowed to be visible on the Zoom screen, just as they're not allowed to be in a public meeting either.
Correct.
In a public meeting, we would be able to communicate with each other.
So, let's see.
Zoom sham is not a public meeting.
Okay. All right. Are we ready?
So this evening we have, um, Cindy Mojica from East Hampton High School here to talk about Safe Passages, which she has, I think, shared with you previously, but it's a new semester up at the high school. So Cindy, welcome. Thank you for coming tonight and you're up.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cindy Mojica and I am the Diversity Inclusion Liaison at East Hampton High School. And I actually share, uh, we actually work in conjunction with Safe Passages, with the Healthy Relationship Grant. Um, it has been for, I think, two years now. Um, and this past semester, we just had our first curriculum go through. And like you said, we're going into spring and Amy Cronin is actually going to show you what we're looking for and we are actually recruiting students and guardians, uh, for the new session. So I'm going to pass it to Amy. And if someone please gave Amy permission to share, she has some slides that you can see, like the information. Thank you. And Amy's on.
Thank you so much, Cindy. Um, yeah, is it possible to, um, to have screen sharing enabled?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. There you go. Should be okay now.
Great. Thank you so much. Awesome. Um, okay. Hello, thank you so much for having us. Um, as Cindy mentioned, um, the Healthy Relationships Grant is a partnership between East Hampton High School and, um, Safe Passage and Community Action Youth Programs. Uh, my name's Amy and I'm the Prevention Coordinator at Safe Passage. So I oversee all of our, um, primary prevention programming for adults and for youth, um, for Safe Passage. And like I said, we had the chance to come speak to this group before. Um, I'm so glad to be back here now so that we can let some of you, let you all know some of the success that we've had so far with the project, um, let you know where the programming is at right now. And let you know how you all, as crucial stakeholders, can get involved if you want to or are able to. So I think that, um, folks who know about the program know that there are, there are two components to the program. There's an in-school curriculum piece, um, and then there is an extracurricular leadership component. So the in-school curriculum piece, um, we have every ninth and 10th grade student at EHS participating, um, in the classroom curriculum. We, um, as folks know, the high school had a new health teacher this year. Um, we had a really wonderful time working with her. Our facilitators went into the health classes, um, all fall. We delivered programming to 89 ninth graders. Um, they've received the first half of the curriculum. They'll receive the second half next year when they're in 10th grade. So that has been, um, that has been really great. Um, and then our other component outside of the classroom curriculum is the leadership component. So that also has two pieces. We have a two-week-long summer leadership academy. Um, and then we also have an advisory group with a fall cohort and a spring cohort. Um, we ran our first leadership academy last summer in 2021. We had, um, virtual programming due to COVID. We are very hopeful that we'll be able to offer in-person programming this summer. Hopefully mostly outdoors. We, uh, and this is a paid opportunity for young people, um, to, to participate. They get $200 to participate in this two-week leadership academy where they, um, gain skills in assertive communication, boundary setting, positive youth development, um, all kinds of really, um, amazing, amazing skills. And we also, um, as Cindy mentioned, just completed our first cohort of our advisory group. We had, um, oh, and I forgot to mention for the summer leadership academy, we had 12 youth advisors who participated, um, in 2021. And our fall advisory group, we had nine youth advisors from EHS participate. Um, they are welcome to return in the spring. Um, we're also recruiting for new youth advisors. We have space for, um, 10 each semester. And those young people, um, are also stipended $100 for each semester that they participate in the advisory group. So, uh, the commitment for the advisory group is, um, the youth have, uh, a youth-only orientation session, um, where they're sort of introduced and oriented to the project and they get to know our facilitators. Um, and then the full advisory group, including adult stakeholders, meets, uh, once monthly throughout the rest of the spring semester. So there will be four full group meetings plus one youth-only orientation. So we are right now holding information sessions for youth and adults, um, last week and this week, uh, around the advisory group and if folks want to learn more. Um, there is one for parents and adult stakeholders happening this Thursday at 6:30 via Zoom. And there's one for youth happening on Friday at 6:00, also via Zoom. Um, and this slide that's up right now, if you, um, actually if you hold your phone up to the QR code, you can scan it and it'll take you, um, to a place to, um, to register for the Zoom meeting and to our website and give you more information. Um, the Zoom link is down there and I think our, um, email addresses are on there too, if folks have questions about that. So even though the, the fall group only had youth advisors, um, only had youth participants, this year we're really looking forward to expanding the spring advisory group to include more adult participation. Sure, everyone in this room knows that young people need and deserve the support of the adults and their life, um, to sort of make this change happen, um, that they're, that they're seeking to create in the school, um, to support a culture of healthy relationships. So this, consider this an invitation to, um, participate or to, um, reach out to me and ask any questions, learn more. Some of the things, um, that we are hoping to offer adults, in addition to asking them to participate in those four advisory group meetings, are, um, offering our adult prevention programming, which is called Say Something, um, to parents, caregivers, faculty, um, et cetera. Um, and adults who are involved in the school system are also going to be offered, um, additional training modules from Safe Passage in teen dating violence, supporting LGBTQ youth, managing disclosures of violence, um, coming from young people and responding to trauma, um, in a way that, um, mirrors best practices around, um, what we know about survivors of violence. So I would be so happy, um, to hear from any of you who, um, who want to get involved. And this, uh, this email, um, up here, you can reach me at, my personal email is also amy@safepass.org. Um, and I don't know if it's possible for me to, um, send materials to, um, Madam Chair or Dr. Leclerc that might be distributed to the group, but I'm happy to do that if that's something that folks, um, would want and I need to stop sharing my screen. And if, I don't know how much time there's left. I know, um, a lot of people had a lot to say, but if there is time for questions, I'm happy to answer any, if that's appropriate.
There's always time for questions.
Oh, great.
Especially if you take the time to show up. So thank you. Any questions? Comments?
I just would like to add that we had a ton of students and youth, uh, activists in this group and the curriculum is completely guided by the youth. So whatever we show in the high school is actually from the youth. It came actually from the youth and that's what we focus in most in the summer academy. Uh, last, last summer, we had a blast and we discovered a lot of talent. So I really encourage the youth to come and also the guardians to participate and the faculty and these trainings and these classes of Say Something is very, very important.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Cindy and Amy as well for all the great work that they're doing. Sorry, Mayor.
That's all right.
Um, it's so impressive and I've heard a lot about, uh, the word that always has already, um, happened and would be more than happy to get some materials and a link and push that out on the City Notify Me text, um, tool. So Cindy, you know how to get ahold of me. And we could do, uh, uh, just a quick message and, and push that out and, and do it closer to summer as well. But thank you for the work. It's, it's so important.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, it is important. And feel free to, to send information to the whole school committee. You don't have to go through me to share the information. I'm literally going to make
Okay.
Sure. He has to. So it's just as easy to give it to them right away.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, are we all set for me to go on to the superintendents?
All right.
Okay, so I have a presentation. I'm just going to share my screen.
Yeah.
So this is a follow-up presentation. It's, I labeled it part two. Um, we, just to remind people, we took a look at school start times. I can't even remember when, maybe in summer, early fall, um, around that timeframe. We had done a survey at the end of last year, um, around school start times with the, um, idea of examining the viability of kind of flipping the elementary and the high school start times. And last time in our presentation, I shared with you all the research around why high schoolers do better sleeping later and all of those things. So tonight is just a follow-up to that information and some additional information that this committee requested at the last, um, last time we discussed this topic. So let me, let me just give you a little bit of the highlights from the survey. So first of all, um, we had almost, um, we had about 550 people respond to the survey. That was made up of staff, um, students, families and, um, community members, which included daycare providers, that sort of thing. 56% of respondents chose to keep the start times the way that they currently are. Um, over 60% of the staff wanted to remain with option A, which is the status quo option. And 67% of students that responded preferred option A. In the staff and in the students, we had approximately 100 people, um, for each of those groups. So the survey participants really did like the idea of the high school students getting to sleep later. But, and they also liked the idea of elementary students starting earlier. So there are theoretically things that people liked about switching times. However, where people got a little hung up with some of the specifics. So the elementary, if we truly flipped the schedule, the elementary students would have to start at approximately 7:35 versus currently they started 8:45. So many families, while they did like the idea of students starting earlier than 8:45 at the elementary level, they they did not like the idea of them starting at 7:35 AM. They felt that that was too early. Older students, there were some concerns from parents that older students would not be available for childcare. So childcare was a big concern. So that's another thing that parents did not like about the proposed change that we put out there. People also did not like the perceived impact on after-school jobs for students and athletics shifting to later times. So if we move the high school students to a later start time in the morning, that means that they would have a later end time at the end of the day. And so a lot of them have things that they do in the afternoon, whether it's childcare, whether it's jobs, whether it's athletics. Not to say that some of those obstacles could not be addressed, but people felt that they wanted things to stay the way that they were because they didn't want such a, a big shift. And people that had concerns about the early start time for elementary students also had concerns about the other end of the day. There's a long afternoon of childcare for elementary students. If they start at 7:35 in the morning, their school day ends at 2:00 PM. And for some students, that would put them in afternoon childcare for three or four hours. So families felt that that was too long. So those are some of the, the, kind of when you broke it down, some of the reasons why parents said they wanted to keep the status quo when given the choices that we gave them. So there were a few things that this committee wanted to explore a little bit further. One was transportation. We wanted to explore if we could expand the number of buses that we have. And I'll talk a little bit about why we wanted to ask that question. We also wanted to look at the impact that this would have on our CTEC students, the students that go to Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. And let me stop there for a second. So in our high school, students that choose to take up a vocational field have the choice to go to the Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. It's a half-day program, which means they do a half-day in East Hampton and a half-day at their vocational school in West Springfield. And we have approximately 40 kids that take advantage of that program. So that will have an impact on our high school schedule. So we'll talk a little bit about that. And this group, this committee, also asked about childcare. The length of time, which I wanted, I wanted to get you a little information on, and the slots available. Because i- it's kind of a multi-layered problem. If we don't have high school students, can we expand some of our school district program? So let's take each of those issues separately. So transportation. The school district currently has seven buses. We have an eighth bus that works on our vocational runs to the collaborative and to Smith-Vogue, which are two collaborative schools. Next year, we need an additional four buses due to the move to Mountain View School. So that's if nothing else changes, just the fact that we're moving into a new middle, a new pre-K through eighth school necessitates the need for four new buses at a cost of approximately $80,000 per bus. The additional buses will allow us to minimally transport all the students that would qualify under our current policy. And I know this committee would like to do even more than that because our current policy is, is pretty bare bones. And every year we ask, can we fit more students on the bus? Can we fit more students on the bus? And just to do the bare minimum that we're currently doing, when we move into the new building, we would need four more buses. And that is if we keep the tiers that we currently have with the middle school starting at 8:05 and the elementary starting at 8:40. So in other words, the bus fills up with middle schoolers, they drop those students off at Mountain View, then they go back out, pick up the elementary kids, and then bring those students to the elementary school. For context, this year, 230 students in K through four qualify to ride the bus based on the, kind of the neighborhood schools that we have in the community. Next year, with the new school, 536 K through five students will qualify to ride the bus, which is 125% growth due to the new location. So that's why we need four more buses. Now, families, in the narrative part of our survey, said, can we explore the Mountain View students being on the same time schedule? For example, everyone comes in at 8:10 AM, which is, you know, kind of meets some of the needs of the elementary families that didn't want them to start so early, but were willing to explore it. To transport all the students that would minimally qualify, we would need six new buses, which is almost doubling our fleet that we currently have. So families expressed concern over the youngest, this was a final thought, and it's not transportation, but it's waiting at the bus stop. Families did express concern in the survey over our youngest students being out to catch the bus or walk in the mornings when it is still dark, which is, you know, in the dead of winter. So those are some of the pieces of information that you requested about transportation. If you remember when we talked about this in the fall, we were undertaking a transportation study for the new school. And so that's some of the information from that study. Now, our vocational program. Our priority vocational school is the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, or CTEC, which is in West Springfield. That means that this school committee years ago voted that that's our primary vocational school. This program is designed for high school students and they spend half a day in East Hampton and half a day in West Springfield for all four years of their high school career. We currently have 16 students in the morning program and 23 in the afternoon program, which is roughly 10% of our high school population. And those numbers stay very similar year to year. Numbers may fluctuate by one or two students per year, but they generally stay the same. The collaborative operates on a traditional high school time schedule. And they service multiple school districts. And so shifting the start and end times for the collaborative in West Springfield is not an option. In other words, we communicated with them and said, would you ever consider shifting starting and ending times? And they said, no, because the school districts that they service are on a traditional high school schedule. And so why can't all of our vocational students go to Smith-Vogue, which is another option that some of our students explore for high school? We currently only allow them to take a few programs there, like agricultural mechanics, programs that are not offered at CTEC or the Lower Pioneer Valley Collaborative. So again, one of the primary reasons is that Smith-Vogue is not our primary vocational school, which was voted by this, by the school committee years ago. Second is that students, when they go to Smith, they go for a full day. So they lose their connection to East Hampton Public Schools. So we do like the half-day vocational program because those students are still our students and they still come to East Hampton High for half a day. Third, there's a significant cost differential. So tuition per year at Smith-Vogue is $18,679 per student, compared to $13,000 that we spend for the program at the collaborative. For those 39 students that currently go to the collaborative in West Springfield to attend Smith would be an additional cost to the district of $209,000 next year if we were to make that shift. So the budget would have to be increased every year. That's not a one-time-only cost. So it is more of a deal to stay at CTEC. And childcare. So many families expressed concerns in the survey, in the narrative section, over childcare as a factor to not shift the start times. A lot of families in East Hampton rely on older siblings to watch younger siblings after school. The problem is if we shift, the older students will still be in school. Number two, families are concerned that young children will be in after-school care for an extended period of time due to work schedules. And since families will not have older siblings to assist them, assist them, more will need outside childcare options. So a concern about available slots was raised. Now, we know going into the new school that we can expand our childcare. That may not be the right fit for everybody, but we can address that, but we can't really speak to outside programs. But that is a concern that people have. And it's an awfully long day for young children. So here are the recommendations of our team. Whoops, sorry. Didn't mean to do that. Here are the recommendations of our team based on this information. We recommend making no significant changes next year. Keep the status quo. This would give everyone time to acclimate to the new school. Transitioning into the new pre-K through eighth school will be a huge undertaking. Students, staff, and families do not seem to be in favor of a shift at this time. And in speaking to other communities where they have tried this, they, they shared with me anecdotally that if you don't have parents and staff onboard, it's not going to be successful. And right now, we don't have the parents and the staff onboard, and we don't really have students onboard either. After this first year, once everyone is acclimated to Mountain View, we can begin to work with a group of educators and families to explore if moving Mountain View to one start and end time for all students in grades K through eight is wanted and if additional buses can be purchased. This will allow the district to incrementally expand the bus fleet, purchasing four new buses this coming year, and it provides families time to get used to the changes related to the new school building. So those are the recommendations that we have for you tonight after we've explored this option. I think that the shift of simply flipping high school and elementary school is a little bit too drastic for all the parties involved. And so we need to come up with kind of other options. And we can't really do that yet without the bus fleet and without having gone through at least a year at Mountain View to give people time to get acclimated to the new system. So I'll stop my share and take any questions or comments from the group.
I see your card stand up.
Mayor? Oh, okay. Thank you. I, I know that this has been arduous and I appreciate it, Allison. I do have kind of a, a cost, marginal cost versus marginal revenue cost around vocational school. So LPVAC on the face of it is a deal, but I just will raise again that the schedule is very awkward and really prevents students to really steep in the curriculum at either, at either school because midway they're, they're changing. And I, I think that with the clear need for vocational schooling and occupations around vocational schools, we need to take a look at really making those students comfortable in one campus and to build those community connections, but also connections to possible vocational. The, I, I just wonder, when you add the, the cost of teaching plus the cost of busing, an extra trip, does the cost equal out or become smaller? Especially when there's a bus shortage. The, the plan to buy for new buses, I mean, I, I, I guess it's a question, but, but I think speaks to that bus shortage. You know, and I, I would just request that we review the, our preferred vocational school from LPVAC to Smith Vocational. And on top of it, Smith Vocational alums work throughout East Hampton, the Pioneer Valley, and think that could be a tremendous support for the vocational students coming out of Smith rather than LPVAC. So, thank you.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a school committee decision. That's not a me decision. That's a, that's the school committee has to take a vote on the primary vocational school, which you haven't done, I think, since maybe 2014. It might have been before all of us. So it's definitely something that if the committee wants to explore that option again, we can certainly do that.
Laurie? First is to respond to what the mayor said because I have the experience of teaching students who are in CTEC, of course, in another district, in a district where they're able to go in the same town to CTEC. But it's still a very positive experience that they're able to have academic courses in the high school and still be with their school community and then get the benefits of having vocational education rather than giving up their school community and going to a VOTEC school. So, and you know, I talk to the students all the time because I teach them. So I just wanted to offer that perspective. And I just want to thank you, Dr. Leclerc, because I know how arduous and tedious this whole study has been. And you really have explored all the options and all the concerns that were presented to you. So I want to thank you for that.
Ben?
I'm just wondering, if students go to Smith, do we effectively lose them? Like, is that the equivalent of them leaving the district? Like, like they're gone? Like they're, they might as well, it's like choicing out?
Yes.
And that, that doesn't sound like a good outcome.
Well, it's, you know, there are, there are benefits. As Laurie said, I have, I too have worked and taught in districts that send students to the half-day collaborative program for many, many years. And it's always been a very positive experience. But a day, a day-long program has different benefits. So it's, you know, there are positives to both sides. They're both excellent programs and it's not an easy choice.
Megan? Do you think that the students have any preference of which place they're going to?
You know what? I don't, I don't know personally if they've done survey data on that. From my, my looking at both programs, the collaborative is a fairly newer building. It's a little bit, it's a little bit more state-of-the-art, I think, than some of the programs at Smith. But I can't, I haven't been through all the programs at Smith, so I can't say for sure. So they both offer different things, you know? So I think it's hard to compare cosmetology to agriculture, you know? I mean, it's, they have different, they meet different needs for different students.
I do. Anybody else? Any other questions about the survey, about busing? Not for now. All right.
Okay, so COVID update. Well, just want to say, give you a few pieces of information. So we started the at-home testing program. We have 799 people signed up for that program. We have 207 staff and 592 students. It's an optional program, so those that want to choose it, choose it. And those that don't want to choose it, don't have to. But it seems to be responding well. There, there haven't been any glitches that we've seen. We've received all the materials we need in a very timely manner. The second piece of information that I will give is that we are putting on another vaccine clinic in East Hampton, again, for anyone that wants to take part in it. It's for ages five and up, meaning even adults. It's for ages five and up, meaning even adults. So it could be for the first dose, for the second dose, for the booster. It's for anyone. It's at Mountain View School. So for anyone that wants to check out Mountain View, we invite you to sign up to get boosted. That's February sixteenth is the first dose or the first appointments. And then again on March ninth. So we're offering that to anyone that maybe hasn't had time to get their shots and is interested in doing that. It's also a nice opportunity for us to provide a service to families in East Hampton that may be challenged to get to a medical facility outside of town or get to a pharmacy or wherever they can get a shot. So we have those two things going on with COVID. We have opened up for spectators again at our sporting events. That seems to be going well and parents are very positive about that. And let's see, what else can I say about it? The COVID response team met today. Our numbers are trending in the right direction as they are also in the community, as they are in the state, as they are in the national scheme of things. So things are, are looking, are looking pretty good. They're not where they were months ago, but I think that we're seeing the trends in the right direction. So we appreciate what families have done to help us, partner with us on that and to get the numbers down. We did talk today at our COVID response team about kind of the off ramps or the metrics that we're going to be looking at when we do get to the point where we are exploring the idea of removing masks. So it's, it's on our radar. We're having the conversations. We want to be informed. We want to be prepared. We want to be timely in our decision making. So the committee began exploring that. One thing I will say, and this is absolutely not to kick the can to down the road or to anyone else. But the city of East Hampton has a mask mandate. So it's useless for me to try and do anything. Until the Board of Health in East Hampton makes the decision that's best for the community of East Hampton. Because as long as there's a mask mandate in, indoors in East Hampton, I can't make any shifts in the schools. So that, we all kind of agree that that needs, whenever, whenever the Board of Health makes their decision is when we'll start exploring our decisions. But we are doing the necessary things that we need to do to inform ourselves, get educated about next steps. We're, you know, participating in all the informational trainings and workshops at the state level. And we're having those conversations. So we had those conversations today. Our union was a part of the conversation. There were school committee representation, city health representation, our school nurses are there. So they're all feeling the, the impact of these decisions and they take them very seriously. And they weigh them very heavily. I do want to say, kind of hand in hand with this discussion. Kudos to our school nurses that have been doing an amazing job. They've been doing an amazing job all year, but the past month has not been a light lift in our schools for the nurses. And to work with them hand in hand. The fire department sent EMTs into our school nurse offices to work with them these past few weeks. And they have also been a tremendous help. So thank you to Chief Norris and the EMTs that have been working with our nurses just to help them get caught up. So, you know, we, we take this conversation very seriously. My personal opinions don't matter. The personal opinions of the committee don't really matter. We're looking at informing ourselves and making the best decisions for our students, but we're taking into consideration a lot of voices and a lot of opinions. And so we just ask for your patience as we kind of get through all this information. And so Megan, you were at that meeting. I don't know if you want to add anything. I'll stop, I'll stop there.
This is always my question for Cindy of should I add any updates now or should I wait until my, my session later here?
Yeah, I think you can wait till your part. You know, I think between the two of you, you always cover everything that we need to, to get through.
Yeah, so I don't need any decisions from the school committee tonight around COVID. Just wanted to give those updates. So I am all set. Thank you.
All right. And you have been waiting patiently. It is time for our student representative update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So first off, I just want to announce the amazing fifth win of our We the People team. And how incredible that is and how proud students and staff are of our team. Personal note, my best friend is on the team. I'm very proud. So next, as I had mentioned last time, Student Council has planned a spirit week for February fourteenth through the eighteenth, which is next week. The themes for the days that we have coming up are, on Monday, the theme will be blackout versus white out day. So tenth and twelfth grade students will wear black and ninth and eleventh grade students will wear white. Tuesday will be Senior Citizen Day. So on this day, students are encouraged to dress up as senior citizens. You know, walkers, tans, wigs, glasses, the whole shebang. On Wednesday, the theme is going to be, on Wednesdays, we wear pink. So the theme for this day has been taken from the movie Mean Girls. And everyone is just gonna dress up in pink and it should be really interesting. Thursday is going to be Pop Culture Day. So students will be able to dress up as their favorite celebrities, actors, singers, or you could do like a pop culture reference. And Friday is going to be Summer on Winter Day. So students will wear clothes like bathing suits, floppy hats and Hawaiian shirts. But over their normal winter clothes, we're expecting some interesting outfits there. And finally, I just want to inform everyone that on Friday, the eighteenth, Student Council will be initiating the homeroom challenges. So we decided to challenge the homerooms of EHS to get to know each other more. And every homeroom will have a series of small team oriented games to play during an extended advisory. The goal is not to win those games, but to get the students to know each other on a more personal level by competing together. And we hope that by doing this, we will create a more inclusive and cheerful environment at EHS. So that is all I have right now and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Spirit Week is always so much fun in this school because it really lifts everybody's spirits. It does exactly what it's intended to do and gets everybody smiling and talking to each other. And I agree with you, it's often students who don't normally talk to each other who are suddenly engaging. So it's really exciting.
Thank you.
Policy, Laurie.
So we are waiting for some policies to put on an agenda to discuss. So that's where we're at.
Okay, and finance? I know we have an update there.
Yes, so we did begin our budget meetings for FY twenty three. Sorry, let me just, we bring up those notes really quickly. Apologize for not being ready for that. But I think that overall, we first started looking at the enrollment numbers of our school district. Overall, school district numbers are slightly decreasing. But particularly at the high school, those numbers are decreasing at the high school. But it's also a momentary dip because the middle school grades behind those are higher than those numbers. So it's going to be a dip down and then a rise back up as those middle schools move into high school. So most of our grades have over a hundred students, but some of our current high school grades are below a hundred students. So that's in terms of enrollment. And so in looking at the high school budget and just to sort of let everyone know that's new to this process. The finance subcommittee meetings basically go through on every week through February into March to review some section of the budget. We look first at sort of what that budget is put forward by the leadership team with Dr. Leclerc's leadership. To sort of come up with the best budget that they think they need. And then as we get further through this process and see all of those budgets coming together, then we start to look at how to adjust them to meet the overall best interest for the whole school district. So first, this year, we looked at the high schools budget because it's the least changing budget. Obviously, we are for the very first time going to be looking at a Mountain View school budget. And that's going to be pulling together the middle school and the elementaries from previous years. So that's going to be a very, much more complicated budget that's pulling a lot of different pieces in together. And trying to find the best balance where a lot of these principals and administrative teams haven't even been in the building yet. So that's part of that challenge that we're going through. So we've given them the most time. So like I said, we went through the high school budget. We went through, and then next week we'll be looking at the school district system budget as well as special education. And then after break, we'll be looking at the Mountain View school. And then we have a final meeting on the seventh where all those different pieces gets brought together and we review the entire budget. Sometimes that can be completed in one budget, in one meeting. Sometimes it needs to take a second. And then it will be coming out to the school district, school committee for approval in our second March meeting. I think it's I won't even say, but it's something, it's the second meeting in March. We'll be bringing it out to the entire budget, entire committee. So that's sort of where we're at. In terms of the high school, preliminarily, it looks good. We do have a number of increases. We did just finish our teacher negotiations and so across the board. We have union members who are getting a two percent increase. Plus in the schools, we have steps and lanes depending on education or different credits and factors that go into that. And so there's a decent amount of budgetary increase just based on the staffing positions increase. And that's always a very large portion of our budget. And so, and then also we are in the process right now of renegotiating transportation contract as well. And we know that that's going to have a very significant increase in our budget. So there's a number of different things. I don't want to get into specific numbers or percentages right now, but I think that that, you know, there's some key things that we are looking at and paying attention closely to as we go through and we pull these different budgets together. But it's, it's, we're in process and really appreciation out to the administration and to Dr. Leclerc's leadership team.
Thank you.
If there's any questions though, I know like Ben, this is your first time, or if there's anybody else who has any questions, feel free to ask as well. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, on to our collaborative update.
Okay, so yeah, I attended my first meeting of the collaborative and it was incredibly instructive in getting to know how unbelievably vast their project is statewide. Like they are involved in so much in this state. And so I've been steeping myself in the, the acronyms which are plentiful. There's just so many. There was a, a, a lot on the agenda, but there was two sort of interesting, I think, relevant, somewhat relevant to our work here that I wanted to talk about, maybe three actually. The, the collaborative is, is currently engaged in collective bargaining with unions representing the Department of Youth Services and special education institutional settings. These negotiations, they are being conducted with a, with a team from CES that includes the executive director. And representatives from the collective bargaining units. And it seems like a very complicated procedure. I, I just got my first taste of what they're up to, but that's in process. The, the second thing that came up was there was a big presentation from Emily Hoffman, who's the state program director for the Mass migrant education program. And I didn't know about this, but it's a, it, it works underneath the collaborative. And their main job is to help migratory students and youth meet their academic goals. And they make sure that all students have pathways to graduation or, or the HISA exam. They also support migratory children and youth to overcome educational disruption, cultural and language barriers, social isolation. Various health related problems and other factors that may inhibit their ability to succeed in school. And it was, it was pretty fantastic to hear about the kind of work they're doing to, to help a very specific population. They're also working in, with, with vaccinations and trying to support vaccination rates for some of these migratory workers and families in the state. So we learned a little bit about that. And then the, the last thing that was, that stood out, and it was right at the end of the meeting. There was a conversation kind of came up around CPACs, which are Special Education Parent Advisory Councils. And according to law, every district is required to have a CPAC. And it was really great to hear reps from a whole series of districts around Western Mass talking very enthusiastically about, about the state of their CPAC. Some of them are very active, some of them are pretty dormant. And you know, several people talked about how usually the CPAC comes to life when like one or two motivated parents step in and, you know, run the, run the ship. So that was really cool. I learned a lot about the way, the way the CPAC can, can both be a kind of support group for parents. But it can also be, it can work on advocacy or it can work on community building. You know, it can be there to help parents with things like 504s or IEPs, you know, basic level kind of support. So the executive director of, of the collaborative, his name is Todd Gazda. He's, he's working on gathering information and resources to share with districts about CPACs. And I know that we have, we have a, we have one that's sort of waiting in the wings. And I wanted to, I had some couple of questions about that. I think maybe we could bring that up at other, if that makes the most sense. But yeah, that was about it. It was a pretty, pretty robust situation, three and a half hours. You know, it was a lot of stuff and it was impressive. I, I, I'd been wondering for a long time what the collaborative does. And I got my first real taste for it. So looking forward to learning a lot more.
You certainly will. I, I find it fascinating to get a sense of all the districts because they're all together in one room. And each district is so different and yet a lot of our work is all similar. So it's really cool to listen.
Yeah, there's a desire to talk and communicate, which is cool. You know, people want to reach out and learn from each other.
All right. Well, thank you. Any questions? All right, on to Megan.
All right, Dr. Leclerc covered most of what we talked about. My little overview here is that there was another discussion of as we move into this new program with the rapid tests at home, if we know for sure if kids are using them. Not kids, if families are using them appropriately on the day that they're intended to use. And, and after some sort of discussion about that, it just, we sort of came back to this idea that, you know, those who have opted into the program opted in because they want to have the information. And we don't have any sort of check in place, not East Hampton particularly, but like the state doesn't put any check in like are people stockpiling tests or, you know, using them on the day prescribed. It doesn't, there's, it's not clear. There's no reporting mechanism, but very likely people who have opted in are using them as intended. So it seems to be working out well so far, although we are just shortly, you know, just shortly into the program. We talked a lot about sort of the trends in the city right now and the information that's available on the city dashboard. So there's always that data presented, which you can find via the health department. Especially on their Facebook page. I believe it's also linked online. If you go to their city webpage. This week, there's a lot of information on vaccine safety data and some information on pediatric cases. We discussed a little bit about We discussed a little bit about, you know, the vaccine coverage rates in the elementary schools and the middle school and the high school. We have about 80% vaccinated in the, of kids vaccinated in the middle school and the high school. Staff, faculty, teachers, something like 95% are vaccinated. So really high vaccine coverage in those grades. We still have much lower vaccine coverage in the elementary school, and it's not totally clear why. I know we got the first, you know, half an hour or so today, we heard from a lot of concerned citizens talking about sort of one aspect of vaccine considerations. There's also, based on those who are interacting with the students and their families, seems to be a lot of sort of more logistical, not even like objections to the vaccine, but just like, oh, I just thought I would get it when I brought my child in for their well visit. And so I don't not want to get the vaccine, but, you know, I'll just do it at my next regularly scheduled visit. So we had hoped that the vaccine clinic would, would be helpful for some families, and there are some people signed up, and there are plenty of open spots left, as Dr. Leclerc said. That was headed into this discussion of sort of what's the off-ramp? What metrics are we going to look at for taking masks off? No solid decisions there. We will keep struggling through that, like all school districts are. Looking here, we reaffirmed in the group together that we will not make decisions or advise and make recommendations to Dr. Leclerc, who will make final decisions based on anything other than science. So, you know, opinions, stuff we did last year or two years ago, we understand as a group that things change and decisions that were necessary two years ago are no longer necessary and, and that the situation is constantly updating. So we just sort of reaffirmed that to ourselves and that, you know, the situation from here on forward, hopefully at some point shortly, there'll be, the opportunity and the metrics will be such that we can be unmasked in school. And we'll just acknowledge that there's like no permanent decisions, at least at this stage of the pandemic, where we just have to be ready to pivot back. If, you know, case rates start to increase again, then we might have small periods of masking come back. And so we'll just sort of take it as we go, and we'll just try to understand upfront that decisions that come out won't be permanent for the time being, for the time being. And we, we read that the state is pivoting to this personal responsibility compared to sort of lots of control, like in terms of the contact tracing, like all of that stuff has sort of been shifting more to personal responsibility. And so, you know, we're, we're sort of finding our way as we move forward with that, with input from the union and teachers and the nurses and all of that. I feel like I had one other thing I wanted to tell you, and I can't remember what it is now, so I guess that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Ah, I know what I want to say. I'm sorry, one last thing. I wanted to make clear that the decisions that are being talked about are mask-related, but there has been no discussion of pushing or mandating vaccines. So the vaccine clinic is to help families who are interested in getting their children vaccinated or for staff who are interested at any age, but it is not, there's not a discussion of a vaccine mandate happening. I don't anticipate that there would be one at any point. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. It sounds like that's a concern of folks and.
Thank you. Any questions about that? All right. So Miren, there hasn't been a safety meeting, correct? Okay, so on to that. And Lori, wellness?
Well, I would like to report on a very successful first winter walk in East Hampton. It was a wonderful event. There were around 60 Mountain View students who participated, and we met at the safety complex. I would like to thank East Hampton Police Department. Chief Alberti, right away, was so supportive, as he always is. And he offered the services of Officer Sici and Detective Rogalski. We didn't need more police there because we didn't have the elementary school involved because of the winter snowbanks and the winter weather. I'd also like to thank Vice Principal Dan Stern, who went and picked up all the hot chocolate and was there serving it. And Mr. Scott Kavanaugh, one of the teachers, they were both instrumental in getting the kids very interested in participating in this fabulous walk. And Safe Roots to Schools are very happy with what we've been doing. So that's great. And I would like to tell everybody that Dr. Leclerc and I had a very productive discussion today about how we view the wellness committee right now. As you just heard, there is still a very active COVID response team, and many of the people that were involved with the wellness committee are involved with that. And we really can't ask them to do something else. But as you've also seen, I've been actively working since I became a school committee member to promote healthy ways to get to school, such as our walk and ride events. And I will continue to do that. But in addition to that, when people get in touch with us about wellness issues, I then explore ways to get us involved. And that's what we discussed today. So as you've heard, there are people concerned with the use of technology and phones with our students and the way to Aethan. So those are things that we can explore, but we don't need to reconvene right now a whole committee, which before involved food services and all of the people in public health. And so, and we had, at one point, we had a principal from every school involved. So because certain areas of concern only deal with a certain segment of the population, I'm happy to try to direct everybody in the right way and arrange meetings with the people who are most concerned with what the topic is. So tonight, I was thrilled that Ann Tally came on because she, right away, reached out to me after our last meeting, when she heard the conversations going on and about my wanting to reconvene the wellness committee. So Dr. Leclerc and I will meet with Ann and Rebecca Edwards from our Healthy Youth Coalition, and I can bring back any of the information, what we can do as a school committee. I don't want anybody on the school committee to think that I'm taking this over in my own personal way. I'm just going to be the liaison with different constituents in our community so to direct our committee in the proper ways that we can support people who have concerns. So we've also received emails, you know, with concerns about mental health and concerns about vaping. And these are all issues that we can explore from a wellness perspective, but we don't need to have a whole large committee that may not be involved with all the aspects working together. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah, sounds great.
So I just want to invite anybody who is listening to this, or here's the recording. If you have specific concerns that deal with wellness, please feel free to contact me, and we'll explore how we can work together as a community.
Is the wellness committee going to combine with the Healthy Youth Coalition? Because it, it feels like there's a similar energy there, like they could, they could do good work as, as one. I'm, I'm just curious.
So that's what we did in the past. We worked together. And also, so Ann was mentioning the parent advisory group. So just because my neighbor was one of the leaders of that, Megan's going like that, she knows Kim very well. So Kim used to have these meetings at her house, and she always invited me. So that was another avenue for me to get together in these informal groups of parents to hear their concerns, then bring it back to the wellness committee. And I'm still willing to participate in parent groups. So yes, we, we do work together.
Megan?
I have a question for you, and forgive me if I missed how you, what you were saying this specific part would be. But so for that, like, tech overview and like the wait till eighth, and we, I know we talked last meeting and other about like perhaps having a presentation, maybe from Julianne and somebody who can talk to us about wait till eighth, like, how does that fit in?
So that's what I had mentioned. So Ann is interested in that and with the tech, with the Healthy Youth Coalition. And I was happy to listen to Leah Ewing tonight as well. And I think that as a school committee, that we, I'm not sure if we would need to vote on something like that, but just having that link available so people in the community, it, it, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're supporting everything that that group has to say at this point because we haven't explored it enough. But I, I really value that perspective of having that link available on our school district website so parents can explore the options. I don't know how you all feel about that.
I think it's a great idea. And my understanding is the, the earlier that parents can, in the process of school, that they can get the information, the better. So I didn't know if there's a way that, even if it's not being, you know,
Endorsed.
Endorsed, yeah. If that information was available at places like kindergarten, information night, that kind of spot.
And Dr. Leclerc, can that be put on our district website with the caveat saying this has not been officially endorsed by the school committee, but we want people to have this as a resource? Is that okay to do?
Yes, I think if I understood Leah earlier this evening, she said there was going to be a follow-up email with all the information. So I'll see what she sends if we can use that. We have a new website up, so I'll work with Jean Libby on that, who may have jumped off. Oh, Jean's still here, but I'll work with her on that.
I'd also like to thank Jean. She always goes to our events now, and she's a wonderful addition to the school community. So thank you so much, Jean, for being at the walk last week.
Thank you. Okay, we are now in the section of other. And the first thing on the list is the DESI letter. Do you have any progress on that?
No, no updates from us.
Yeah, we, last week, I felt like we decided we weren't proceeding with that at this time.
Yeah.
So there was not.
Well, I know, we decided to put it down the road, so it's just really a check-in on whether or not anything has changed and we're gonna put it on hold for a bit. Okay, how about any other, other? Ben and Megan?
I just wanted to follow up on the, on the CPAC question. You know, I've learned a little bit about that and the idea that it's required by law that every district have one of these organizations running. I talked to a couple of people who, who said that they've communicated with you, Allison, and I was just thinking like, they were waiting for, they said they were waiting for an email or, or a bit of information, and I was just curious like where the state of our CPAC is and, and how we could kind of.
I don't think they've been communicating with me. I haven't talked to anyone about CPAC, but that's usually a Sarah Mochack thing. And specifically, the Sarah Mochack, our special ed director oversees CPAC, and the person in her office that people should reach out to is Anna Little, her admin assistant. Yes. And so I don't know where they are, but they do have, they do have a CPAC. I don't know where they are in the process, if they've met already this year or not, but I can follow up. If people want to reach out to me, just for ease, I'm happy to forward the emails to Anna Little, and they can get the answers to their questions.
As far as you know, is it just a question of, like, what, what, what has to happen? Like, the people who are interested just have to contact and, and then?
Yep, and then they just set up a meeting. Some, sometimes for CPAC meetings, they have speakers to discuss certain issues, or they discuss, like, they just have an, an open forum where people can ask questions. So they do a different, a different variety of things. I mean, in previous years, pre-COVID, you would have, you know, light refreshments, people would come, maybe hear a presenter. It's been done virtually. So I think it would probably be a virtual meeting this year.
And from what I understood, like, they need an email address or like, there was a question of how to get an email address for the CPAC? Is that also?
Yes, that's Anna Little, but we could, if there isn't an email address already, which I think there probably is, we can look into that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, Ben, if you have your questions, just shoot me an email and I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay, sounds great.
Yep.
Megan?
Yes, I was going to give my little PTO update. So I attended one of their meetings, listened in on all the things that they are working on. They are in the midst of finalizing the scavenger hunt that will take place over February break. Flyers will be coming home. I've seen the flyers, they look great. I did get insider information on the clues, so, you know, if you see me racing to the end before everybody else, it's because I got, you know, some clues about the route, but it sounds really fun, and they've really put a lot of effort into that. So look for more information on that. They are also planning to be at kindergarten information night. Hopefully, you can't hear my children in the background screaming. They are also working on a couple of fundraisers that are upcoming. So we'll, you know, they'll have information coming out about that soon, but you can always contribute via Venmo. They do have a Venmo account that doesn't link to one person, that's linked to the PTO in general, and very easily by linking your Amazon smile. But the biggest thing that they would love to see is more people getting involved. They love to have more parents who are interested. And so that's my, my PTO update.
Thank you. So any other, other? Nope, okay, then let's go on to our action items. That's you again, Megan.
Yes, it is. I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 25th, 2022 regular meeting.
I second that. Okay, Lori? Laura Garcia, aye. Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mira La Chapelle?
Mira La Chapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
And Miren?
Miren, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable. Authorization for payment dated 1/27/2022 in the amount of $324,716.62.
I second that. Okay, Lori?
Laura Garcia, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor?
Mira La Chapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Miren?
Miren Goldstein, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
I would like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated 1/27/2022 in the amount of $585,581.97.
I second that. Lori?
Laura Garcia, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor?
Mira La Chapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Miren?
Miren Goldstein, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget transfer request of $8,000 from other instructional services Pepin to medical therapist Maple.
I second that. Okay. Laura Garcia, aye. Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor?
Mira La Chapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Miren?
Miren Goldstein, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
Next.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget transfer request of $5,000 from textbooks and instructional materials to general supplies at Mountain View School.
I second that. Laura Garcia, aye. Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor?
Mira La Chapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Miren?
Miren Goldstein, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
And finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget transfer request of $7,000 from contracted services, maintenance of equipment, to contracted services, maintenance of buildings, Maple School.
I second that. Laura Garcia, aye. Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor?
Mira La Chapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Miren?
Miren Goldstein, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
Okay, so our next meeting dates will be in March. You have two, and that is March 8th and 22nd, and I think it was the 22nd, Miren, that you were thinking of that we're going to present the whole budget. Miren, that you were thinking of that we're going to present the whole budget. So you were looking for that date. And yes, and it says that will also be the public hearing for the budget. Then we have April 12th and 26th, May 10th and 24th, and June 14th. And we do not have anything else on our agenda. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, Lori?
Buenas noches.
Okay. Ben?
Uh, good night, everybody.
Mayor?
Aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, good night.
All right, Miren?
Miren Goldstein, good night.
And Cindy Kuzensky, good night. And thank you everybody for coming. Be well.
Good night.